Welcome, ask that you would please rise as we welcome Dr. Reverend Douglas Dent to the podium to lead us in the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Please pray with me. For God who provides, when I have food, help me to remember the hungry. When I have work, help me to remember the jobless. When I have a warm home, help me to remember the homeless. When I am without pain, help me to remember those who suffer. And remembering help me to destroy my complacency and bestir my compassion. Make me concerned enough to help by word and deed those who cry out for what we take for granted. Lord, as we gather tonight, I ask your blessing on all who love and serve our city. And I pray that you would give them hearts of compassion and souls filled with strength to do what must be done so that all may live and thrive in this community. This we ask and pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, impotable with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30 on November 21st, 2022, and we will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of business this evening is the approval of the agenda. We're going to move Representative Jeff Backer is here with us this evening to give us an update. And we're going to move him up to the front of the agenda. Do we have any other changes?
Yeah, Your Honor, council members, good evening. We have two new items this evening. One, under the awarding of bids. Item two, there will be a resolution awarding a snow removal service contract to Knutson Lawn Service. And then on the consent agenda, a resolution authorizing staff to submit a grant to Minda to install a bicycle playground at Athletic Park. And then just to note, I've been asked to remove items five, eight, nine, and 10 from the consent agenda, so we'll discuss those separately this evening.
All right, thank you. Athletic Park. And with that, we can approve the agenda as amended with a motion. Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second.
Thank you, Caroline. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign that motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening. Under bids, we have a resolution awarding the bid for public improvement 9508, which is the RTC Phase III Preservation Project. But before we get that, we're going to call on Representative Jeff Backer to give us a legislative update. Welcome, Representative. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. First of all, I'm going to give my business card up to everybody. This is my personal card. I give it to you so you have my cell number because that's the best way to get ahold of me. I think you, Mayor, you have one already.
I do, yes, thank you.
I don't know who to give it at this table here. I'll give it to you and you can pass it on. And you have it. That's my thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's not so much as a legislative update, it's more so just to, first of all, introduce myself and just a little background. And also, if there are two or three things that I need to be put on my radar screen with the redistricting. So first of all, just a little bit about myself, there is actually two of me. I have identical twin brother, his name is Jay. So if you call me Jay, I will turn to my head as quick as Jeff because I've been called at 50% of my time. So he has a little bit more insulation than I do, that's what he says, so I'm given permission to say that. But if you would, we are very identical. If you call him, you cannot, even to this day, we can trick our mother over the phone. But she's got to be a little bit off guard. So there's two of me. I have volunteered 28 years as an EMT for a community. We run a volunteer service. Prior to be elected as a state rep, I served on council from 2000 to 2004, then I was elected mayor. And in 2007, the city of Brown's Valley went through the worst flood it's ever in its whole history. So I never wished that upon anybody, but you really develop a lot of skills in the crisis. People come to the mayor, it doesn't matter what type, size of the community. And then I served on school board for, I was appointed, and then I was elected, and then I became a state rep. So the district that I represent now includes Paul Wilken County, Traverse County, Grand County, and basically the two fifths western part of Otter Tail, of course, which is the city of Fergus Falls. So Brown's Valley, I tell people of this house district, it's the key west of this district because it's about a mile north of the border. Little background of myself personally, I am married, I have one daughter, she just had, just got married this August 27th this year. And then my twin brother and I, we run four businesses that are on the back of the business card, so we are entrepreneurs and so forth. So that's a little bit about myself. I'd be happy to take any questions. But my question to the mayor and to the council and staff, if there are certain things that I should be aware of, I have talked to other folks in the community, but as elected leaders, you guys hear things that I don't hear, okay? And if there's certain things that I should know that should be on my radar screen, I would appreciate you sharing that right now or if you have a question for me. And that's really my main reason for being here.
Well, we appreciate you being here, Representative. So we do have a legislative committee that will be changing for the next year because one of the council members that serves on that committee has, did not seek reelection. So the typical process for the city, the legislative committee will get together yet in the November or December, and then we will bring any recommendations back to the council at the first meeting in January. And then we'll be in touch with you. We have been past, worked with Joel Carlson, who's our legislative.
And I know Joel very well. I knew Joel was your lobbyist for that. I know Joe and I have worked on a lot of things over the years, not dealing with Fergus, obviously, but now that will take, that will be a different half.
I know he does have good relationships down there. We've had good luck with Joel as our representative down in St. Paul. So that's the process as far as our official legislative asks. We will have a few priorities this year. But does anyone on the council have any just general thoughts, questions for the representative? Any, anything? Anthony?
I would say, you know, we can do with less oversight from particularly kind of the Minnesota Pollution Control Association. I mean, we have, you know, we have a lot of oversight from them, which adds cost.
Tremendous cost.
And, you know, and inhibits a lot of progress to, you know, our neighbors, particularly in our case, like you in Brown's Valley, you've got a neighbor that's a lot more flexible.
Oh, yeah, I would, it's Hicks, is that right?
Yep.
Yep. And Mr. Hicks, I would agree with you. The challenge that we see doesn't matter if we go from Canada down to Iowa, you know, we have these new made-up regulations about parts per billion. If people think how small parts per billion is, it's like a drop in an Olympic-sized swimming pool. But then North Dakota, South Dakota don't have to do it. But we on the Minnesota side have those that we have to pay our taxpayers. And as we know, generally in greater Minnesota, we don't have those tax capacities for regulations that we really don't know that's going to do what they're supposed to. So I understand that because we also arm wrestle, MPC, DNR, dealing with the ag and our rich heritage there. But you brought that up. Is there a certain issue that you guys are facing? Is it with a new treatment plant or a water plant or something?
I mean, mainly our city dump, which, I mean, obviously, you know, the city dump has been an issue. And I mean, we spent probably almost $100,000 on consultants to appease, you know, the agency. And, you know, that just gets passed on to the residents at the end of the day in fees. So I mean, I think any curbing of kind of that outreach, really, it's, but it's a department that's running wild and not, you know, bone-free wild.
We were the first landfill in the state under the new.
Rules.
New rules to be permitted, so we were kind of a guinea pig, if you will. And I think that we ran into a lot of challenges.
And you'll find for me, I'm not one of those reps that, I mean, I will introduce bills that need to be introduced, but what I really enjoy is busting the chops of the bureaucrats down there. That is what I really do. And there's times we have to bust their chops because they're sitting in St. Paul telling us what we should, what they think they know best. Now, that doesn't mean we don't work with them. Of course, we work with them. But instead of busting chops, I think the better choice of words is arm wrestling them. And I've had a good record with that, helping the constituents to fight through the bureaucracy that we see down there in St. Paul, unfortunately. That's getting more and more like DC, and we don't really need that. So I appreciate you sharing that. I enjoy doing that.
Good.
The other thing I would mention is the city's been a member of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities for a number of years, and we've had good luck working with them on a number of legislative priorities, including, you know, their lawsuit against the MPC, or with Osakers, I should say. They've helped. So some of those regulations, I think the Coalition is a good representative of the city's point of view in trying to figure out a balance with the MPC and other agencies as we navigate the, you know, the issues that we face in greater Minnesota.
Okay. Good.
Anything else from anyone on the council, staff? All right, well, thank you very much for being here. Congratulations.
Let me ask you one question. In regards with this, there are, right now, from a council perspective, one or two, because, you know, we'll have a bonding bill. Is there one or two projects that are very important for the city of Fergus that, because I know in the area of Fergus, it's been pretty successful with, you know, you just had that passed with the swimming pool with that, and then the parks tax. But from a bonding perspective, is there something that you would say, you know, Jeff, I think you're going to see these two or three products, projects that should be asked?
Yeah, and I think that that's something that the new council will have to discuss. We had, we did have a bonding request in the last session that we actually went out and fundraised to make it happen so that the different phases for our downtown riverfront redevelopment have been in our bonding requests in the past. That's going to change slightly, and I think it will be premature right now. We're going to go through that process of having a work session with the new council and determine what those priorities are with it. You say that's accurate?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. We'll definitely have a handful of projects for you to work with us on.
Yeah, we won't be short of requests, we promise you that.
No, nobody's ever short of requests. I hear you have a pretty deep wallet, Mayor, so we just go to your wallet. That's what I heard. No, just kidding. Well, I appreciate your time, I know you have a full agenda. And again, please feel free to text or call. The best way to get ahold of me is by cell or by email would be number two, but cell text would be the best way. And you'll find that I will get back with you very quickly. So thank you so much. And if you want to text me your contact information so I can put it in my phone, I would appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
All right. So under bids this evening, we will entertain a resolution awarding a bid for public improvement 9508, which is RTC Phase III Preservation to Comstock Construction in the amount of Bruce Paulson from Stan Tech is here if the council has questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to City Administrator Andrew Bremse.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. Brian unfortunately was not feeling well this evening, so he wasn't able to be here. Bruce is here, should you have any questions? Otherwise, the information is in your packet, and we're looking for this resolution this evening to move forward with Comstock as the lowest responsible bidder. The money that is funding this project is state funding dollars. Ironically, we just were talking about that. And those dollars expire at the end of June 2023, so the timeline is short. Comstock has acknowledged that timeline, that they're able to complete the work in that amount of time. And then the city would be reimbursed through the state funding for these costs. So I don't have anything to add unless there's questions, and then Bruce and I will work together to answer those.
Thank you, Andrew. Would someone like to offer a resolution?
I've one question. Has SHIP-O signed off on all this work?
Yes, but Bruce, do you want to talk about that process?
Is SHIP-O kind of?
Yes, we have received a letter after the 90% submittal and the responses back to the 90% submittal. SHIP-O did send a letter acknowledging our responses and moving forward with the project.
Thank you.
And just for reference, Your Honor, and Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, but SHIP-O has the ability to comment at 30, 60, and 90% of plan, and they get 30 days at each of those steps. So that approval has added some fairly significant time into our timeline, and that's kind of why we're pushing where we are. But like Bruce said, we worked through that process and we've gotten to the finish line there.
Yep. And this project, I actually pushed SHIP-O. Because we weren't doing any demolition, I really tried to stick as close to the 30 days for each of those submittals. And when the 30 days expired on the 30% submittal and I hadn't heard anything from them, I submitted the 60% submittal. And when 30 days expired on the 60% submittal, I sent in the 90% submittal. And then I finally got the first comments. And so, yeah, it's a challenge that the last project we did, the SHIP-O review process delayed that project almost 16 months. So they have a lot of authority and the ability to make us jump through a whole lot of hoops. But like I said, fortunately, this project didn't raise too many concerns from them, and we were able to address that and moved this along a whole lot quicker than the last project.
Thank you, Bruce. Someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Krista, Scott, oh, Scott, you're.
I'll give a second.
Okay, we got a second and a third. Any further questions?
I would say this is probably one of those projects that Jeff could work on, is getting SHIP-O to be 60 days rather than 16 months.
And I understand with the current health circumstances, most city staff, both from SHIP-O's side as well as from a plan review, they're all still working remotely. And so their progress isn't as quick as it was back in 2019. So that's added to the challenge.
Thank you, Bruce. Further comments, questions? Bill?
And just to clarify, I believe you connected with Deed and verified that what's in this plan, what's in this contract, is eligible under this funding. So I know you and Brian were talking on that.
Yes.
Because we wanted to make sure, okay, we have 1.7 million here for the total. We want to make sure all these costs are eligible so we don't have a surprise later and say, oh, you can't use these funds for this. But they did look into that to make sure they were eligible costs.
Bill's had enough surprises lately for a long time.
I can't do anymore.
No more surprises. All right. Any other questions? Scott?
Just a couple of specifics. I don't want to go through the whole list, but just a couple of specifics. Early on in the comment period, there was some question whether or not the memorial building was included, Building 29, whether that was included in the scope of work. And my understanding is that it is included, correct?
That's correct. It's included to the standpoint of covering the windows.
And fixing the roof?
The roof, yeah, they're repairing damaged shingles as part of the basement.
Okay. And then the second area was, we were, we had discussed alternates, I think, was how it was going to be put together in the package for ventilation system in Building 1.
Yep.
And that was also included, correct?
That's not included in the current project, no. Based on the base bid cost, there isn't, there aren't sufficient funds to cover the alternate one which would provide the ventilation system in Building 1.
Okay. That surprises me a bit. I thought that that was included. Were there other alternates that were not included then?
Yes. None of the alternates were accepted. So the other alternates were roof replacement on Building 23, roof replacement on 27, roof replacement on 29, and then going through and removing all of the unit air conditioners and covering up those for the other four alternates.
Okay. So then the roof work on 23 and 27 is just repairing, not replacement. Gotcha. Okay. And we still ended up not spending every dime of this, so there'll be some room, maybe there'd be some, when we get to the end, we'll just have to look and see what we got left?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, we're carrying a 10% contingency as part of the resolution. So hopefully, we'll be able to get through it with expanding those dollars.
Only following that because I think there was really quite a strong interest in finding a way to get the ventilation in there for opening it up for the public.
Yep, I understand, and that was the goal. And unfortunately, the dollars just aren't there with the monies that are currently available for this project.
Scott, any other questions from the council? We have a resolution in a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number two is a.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Thanks for your work on this. Item number two is a sidewalk snow removal contract, awarding that to Knutson Lawn Service. The memorandum is in your, on your desk, I should say, it wasn't in your packet. We'll call on Guy Taylor. Good evening, Guy.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, given the white stuff on the ground, this is a timely subject. City code in Section 151.01 does declare snow that's left on a sidewalk 24 hours, more than 24 hours after the snow has ceased to fall is a nuisance. And the responsibility for removal of that snow and ice is on the property owner of, that is adjacent to that city sidewalk. So we inevitably have to send out numerous letters regarding non-compliance of snow removal each year. And we were overwhelming staff a few years ago trying to keep up with these, so we decided to contract it out, and that's worked pretty well. We got a contractor before you tonight, Mr. John Knutson, Knutson Lawn Services, who was the only one that submitted a quote, and we're recommending he be approved to perform these snow removal services for the next two seasons and a half, basically. It'll be both through the spring of 2024. So basically, how this works, we, staff will either proactively go out and look at sidewalks that are just in their normal line of work as they're out doing their other duties, and if they'll see a sidewalk that needs to be addressed, they will take that upon themselves. It's April, basically, it'll do this, and she'll write a letter to the property owner. And if there is not compliance within two to three days, then the contractor is sent to take care of that work. And he also, once he's been notified, we give him two days to take care of the work. So the work that is done is payable to that property owner. So this initially does get paid for out of city funds, and then we get reimbursed by the property owner paying an invoice back to the city. If it goes unpaid from there, it does get assessed to the property taxes or certified to the property taxes. So request is tonight to authorize for the 2022 through spring of 2024, snow removal contract to be awarded to John Knutson, Knutson Lawn Services.
Thank you, Guy. We can do that through a resolution?
All right.
Thank you. Caroline?
I'll second.
Thank you. Krista, any questions? Or Guy? Anthony?
One is not such a question but a comment. I think, you know, as you say, it seems early that we've got snow, but it's probably not, we live in Minnesota, so it should be an expectation, I suppose, that we get snow. But I think that, you know, we need to encourage people to kind of clear the snow because we want people to use the pavements. And when there is snow on it, then they are slippery and slips and trips and falls are good for Lake Region, but they're not good for kind of us as a community overall. So, you know, I think city staff need to look at pavements, and if there is somebody not clearing it, then we need to get on it because it's a danger to, you know, the public that walk on them.
Yes, and that liability does go back to the property owner if there is a slip, trip, or fall.
Slippery footpaths are not good for anybody.
Correct.
All right, we have a resolution. Justin?
It's maybe an observation or a question and observation. I know, like, in the summers, there's church organizations that go out and mow lawns for the elderly who can't get out and mow. Do you think this is more of, I mean, do we have any information on these properties? Are they, is it that the constraint of getting on and doing it, or is it just people not willing to go shovel?
There's probably, yeah, some that just aren't able to. So, yeah, if there's a group, a charity or a church that would be willing to help cover some of these, doing the work and maybe covering some of the charges, that'd be great. Unfortunately, a city of our size, definitely, there's cases like that that they're just not able to or can't afford.
I was just wondering if that's the majority of these or if that's the minority in terms of the actual cases we usually see that are charging?
Hard to say.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Justin. Any other questions? We have a resolution. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under the consent agenda, let's see, we have, if we remove items five, eight, nine, and 10, and add item 11, which is a bicycle playground at Athletic Park, that gives us seven items. If anyone wants any of those seven items to be removed? Scott?
Number 11, I think we need to clarify just what happened with that.
Okay, so we got that one removed. That leaves us with six. All right, someone like to offer a motion, a resolution to approve the remaining six items?
Offer, Your Honor.
Thanks, Justin.
I'll second.
Thanks, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number five is a resolution approving delinquent utility accounts. Anthony, was that you?
Yeah, that was me. I noticed that our good friends at Westridge Mall obviously are delinquent, and at some point in time, I know that it's tough on the other kind of participants in the mall, but we bend over backwards for this gentleman, and we have done, you know, we've separated property for him. And I think at some point in time, we have to stop being Mr. Minnesota nice. You know, the residents of Fergus Falls deserve, you know, nobody else can get away with what this guy does. So I think it should just be noted that we are once again talking about this gentleman, and if he ever comes and wants to separate another piece of property, you know, to sell it and make money on it, then for one, I will be absolutely against it and force him, I think, to, he needs to start separating off the water and the sewer before he gets any more help from the city.
Yeah, there is a shut-off date that they're aware of, and the adjoining parcels have also been made aware of that. And I think that we've also reached out to the movie theater, at least, to begin the conversations about them have been, you know, some sort of city assistance to get them on a separate city water and sewer, just so that they don't have to deal with the.
The uncertainty.
Yeah, just the complete unacceptable.
Because I think that was part of the agreement we made with them last time when we separated off the last pieces, that he was required to be kept up the snow.
Well, he does when he needs to sell something. As soon as he doesn't need to sell something, he lets it fall behind, so. And then others suffer, I think, to your point, Anthony. It's not just, yeah, it's, other businesses are suffering, so staff's dealing with it. I think duly noted that we're not going to put up with that anymore. So any other, all right, let's see, we need a resolution on that one.
I'll make the resolution.
Thanks, Anthony. Thank you, Brent. Further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number eight is a resolution entering into a memorandum of understanding between the city of Fergus Falls and the supervisors and professionals incorporated bargaining unit. Anthony, did you have a question? Mike's here to answer questions.
I think as this obviously, you know, involves obviously, you know, pay and accost to the city that I don't think it should be on the consent agenda. I think it should be, you know, that we talk about it a little bit, and we can take them all three at the same time.
Eight, nine, and 10 are all dealing with contracts.
They're all dealing with the same, but I think a little bit of background and like what's different between, you know, eight, nine, and 10, if you wouldn't, Mike? Thanks.[1772.82]
Good evening, counsel, and thank you for the question there, Mr. Hicks. Back in February, we entered into a wage compensation study with Arthur J. Gallagher. I've come before the council in previous sessions to talk about our reasoning why and what the findings were. We have an hourly adjustment spread that is a rebalance to our matrix from a dollar amount of four cents upwards to $1.77. We have 11 positions that are impacted throughout the city. That involves 43 individuals within those 11 positions. And the cost to the city is already factored into our budget and has been brought before the council for action. We're looking to do this wage adjustment to our matrix effective 1-1 of 2023. Provided to the council is the actual adjusted matrix that has been shared with our unions as well. And tonight I come before the council to show you the MOUs that will be presented and signed off to our business agents and to our members, basically indicating that this is an adjustment to our matrix pay system outside of negotiations. And hopefully, we'll go forward from here. Questions if you have?
I suppose the only question is, we haven't approved... I mean, have we approved the budget? I mean, we have approved the rate of increase, but we haven't approved the budget.
No.
Which will come next month, yeah. So is it appropriate to approve this now? Or should we approve it after the budget is approved?
That's a good question. Maybe should do it with concurrent with the budget.
I mean, I would say this, Your Honor. If you approve this tonight, you can't make a change to the budget, right? Because then we've contractually committed the city to these wage scales. So either, I mean, if the council feels strongly about it and wants to act tonight, they just lose the flexibility they would have at the next meeting, so... It was in the preliminary levy. It's still in there today. Either way, we could do it either way.
I think it would be prudent to do it when we do the budget.
I think that's fine. Let's... Anyone has any objections? Scott?
Just a question. As you were commenting about this, you said that these adjustments were made outside of the negotiations. I just wanted to understand that. So this is something that you've put together, and then it will still be a part of the negotiations? Or how should I understand what you said?
Sure. This is not a process that I put together. It was hired by a third-party consultant that we entered into. It actually is a rebalance. What they do is they do a nationwide scrub. They look at all like positions. They look at local positions. They look at statewide positions. And we want to make sure that we are paying our employees fairly and also competitive. So we are taking steps to make sure that our matrix is in line with current competition and current market rates for those positions. Not all wages receive an increase. Only those that were identified in the survey to be underpaying at this current rate.
Your Honor. The only thing I would add, Councilor Kwame, we're currently in a three-year contract with all of our labor groups or our unions. That's 2022, 2023, 2024. So we're just completing year one. So what Mike means outside of the contract negotiations is we would be looking to implement this on mid-contract, on January 1 of 2023, not as part of our contract negotiations.
And keep in mind, we have three bargaining units in the city. One is LALS that represents sergeants and patrol officers. Another one is a teamsters group that represents our parking wreck, library, and our public works. And then we have a non-representative group called the Professionals and Supervisors Group. And then a fourth category is non-union as well. Good question.
Thank you, Mike. And what I think...
One more thing I would add. I know we're not going to take action tonight on this, it sounds like. But the other thing, what's before you is a phase-in of what the findings of the compensation study were. We didn't want to just jump there and move everybody to where the findings were all at once because it wasn't a sustainable jump and it wasn't an affordable jump. So this is the reason we wanted to start sooner than later and potentially mid-contract is because we're walking that in, trying to get where we need to get to related to that compensation study. So just wanted to note that as well. We're not taking the big leap. We're going to incrementally get there.
That's correct. And we're also in a competition war out there. I'll give you an example. We solicit and we recruit, and we are down to getting one or two advocates for some key positions. So at a minimum, we have to keep our compensation, our pay process in check because we're having a hard time finding capable professionals at this point. So this is just another part of the adjustments we need to make in order to be competitive and viable going into the future.
Thank you, Mike. We could postpone consideration of resolutions dealing with these memorandums of understanding until the time we consider the budget, if someone would like to make that motion?
I would make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Second by Scott. All favor that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. We'll deal with that on the 5th of December. Let's see. Item number 10... I'm sorry, 11, fine item under the consent agenda would be the bicycle playground at Athletic Park. And I will turn it over to Guy Taylor, our Public Works Director, for any questions on that.
The reason I ask about this is because we've talked about pickleball.
Yes. So we had a hard time finding a contractor to resurface the tennis courts at Athletic Park. Once we did finally find one, and upon him coming and looking at the court or the, yeah, the tennis courts, he said that the deterioration on the surface is much more than that. It goes to the base of those courts. And he said he would not even recommend doing anything as far as tennis or pickleball on those courts in the future. He said they're just too far gone. So the park board felt that with the talk of pickleball courts and the bicycle playground, that we could just flip-flop the locations, have the bicycle playground, then take over the tennis courts at Athletic, and then the pickleball courts be installed up at Broadway Park in that area where there formerly was a skating rink. And the bicycle playground, that surface there at Athletic could be repairable to the point of having that type of amenity put in. As I look to the bicycle expert in the room. So that's where we're at, Mr. Kwame.
Will there be any tennis courts then at Broadway Park? Or is it going to be all converted to pickleball?
There won't be a conversion. It'll be new pickleball courts at Broadway Park.
So the four existing tennis courts will stay? These are additional pickleball courts down by the...
It'll be added, too.
Down by the restrooms there at Broadway.
Okay.
So we could accomplish this through a resolution? Someone like to offer it? Okay, someone like to offer a motion?
I'll make that.
Brent?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Second by Justin. All favor that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, pardon me. That motion carries. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight we have second reading of three ordinances. The first, second reading is ordinance 31-8th series dealing with stormwater management. This has been before the council and discussed in committee. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to our city administrator. See none. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Second, resolution ordinance for consideration this evening is a second reading of ordinance 32-8th series dealing with the zoning of THC. Again, this has been committee. We'll also be considering a further ordinance in December with compliance and regulation and licensure. But this is just the zoning. If anyone has any questions on that, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution... I'm sorry, that ordinance is approved. And finally, there's the second reading of ordinance number 33-8th series dealing with the downtown riverfront Phase II bonds. Bill went over this with us at our last meeting. Any questions? See none. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That ordinance is approved. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $3,374,389.77. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to Bill Sawmore.
I have one, but I think Claire will be the one to speak to it.
All right, well, we get another resolution on the phone.
Fall off of the resolution. Pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. And... Did you say Claire? Go ahead, Scott.
The CDBG HUD revolving loan program had some expenses totaling about $45,000. And I thought it would be a good opportunity to understand that a little bit or how that works and how a business or an individual might qualify for it and to essentially celebrate a successful project.
Thanks, Scott. Claire, can we call on our community development manager, Clara Beck?
Yes.
Good evening. You can stay wherever you'd like.
All right. Well, yes, thank you for bringing that up. We don't often get to talk about BDFF other than just approving some loans. But it's a... We have several revolving loan programs that the city manages, two of which are being utilized in the case of Kaden Law Office, which is what's in your packet. We have an economic development and a facade loan program. And so essentially, those are low-interest loans that any business in town is able to apply for. Goes through Business Development for Fergus Falls, which is a group of community members with backgrounds in lending or banking or just entrepreneurial backgrounds. They get to hear the case for a business and decide if they're a good fit for the program. But essentially, it just helps to keep development going in Fergus Falls. So low-interest loans, they can help with things like updating a building or making a bathroom ADA compliant, things like that. So that's... The expenses that you're seeing are from those programs. Those programs, while it says that they're CDBG HUD, really where that money is coming from is either a federal lending program that the city borrows from and then pays back over time or a state lending program. And then we also had a one-time allocation that came in through two that is now managed through BDFF. But they're all revolving, so it's money that has come in and then is going out to businesses, and this business has paid that back. We're able to continue lending that out.
Excellent. Thank you, Clara.
The CDBG stands for...
Community Development Block Grant.
Block Grant. Very good. Thank you.
Justin? Just a question. I'm sure I'm wrong, but I'm going to ask it anyway. At the last meeting of the whole, we heard from a group where there's challenges for housing. Is this something, a financing arm that could be explored to help them in their gap? Or is that... I guess technically, it's not a... Maybe I'm going to say this wrong, but it's not probably set up as a business?
Are we talking about the nonprofit?
You're welcome.
Yeah. It's not against rules for a nonprofit to apply. I think there are circumstances where we would consider that. It just depends on the project and the way that the money would be used. It's also the applicant needs to be able to show that they have a good background in money management, things like that, in order for the board to feel comfortable lending. So it's really a case-by-case basis. So I'm not going to say it's not an available option. It just, it really depends on the project.
Fair enough. Thank you.
And I would add, it's not a grant program. So they have to kind of... They have to pay it back. And sometimes that's kind of the... You know, they have to demonstrate that they've got funds to, in which obviously, to pay it back.
That just went off in my head. I figured I was wrong.
But it's not impossible for them to apply.
Right. It just seemed that being a financing gap, not that it was a gift, but if they could finance at a low rate, partner with the city might be an opportunity, that's all. I just didn't know how structurally it's not set up as a... Probably the business type that you're looking for, but...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Clara. Any other questions? There's a resolution and a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under reports from staff and administrative officers, we will have, and first off, we'll have an update on the investment portfolio. And we'll call on city finance director, Bill Sawmore. Good evening, Bill.
Thank you, Your Honor, counsel. In your packet tonight, I did put together just a one-page memo kind of explaining where we're at with our investment portfolio for the year. What you have before you is through third quarter. So at the end of September of 2022. Granted, here we are already in November. But a little background, the city portfolio, we have a long-term portfolio and we have more of a short-term portfolio. The long term is managed by Galliard Capital Management, their external professional money manager. This is a long-term fixed income portfolio. So... My phone is buzzing. I see Guy will take care of that. Thank you. The portfolio moves in the inverse when interest rates are rising or coming back down. Of course, as you well know, we have seen great spikes in interest rates over this year so far, certainly through the end of September, of which this memo is. And we have also seen rates go up again in November. They're expected to go up in December a little bit and in January and February. So we're seeing this decline in our portfolio, is what I'm getting at. So as of the end of September, our long-term portfolio was $27.5 million is what the value is there. Our more local funds, they're through US Bank, but then linked to the 4M Fund that is managed through the League of Minnesota Cities for many cities across the state. That's more of a money market type. So there, they're more secure, more liquid. Typically, don't earn as much interest then as you do in a long-term portfolio. However, in the last months, we're glad we've had that larger balance in the 4M Fund of about $12 million at the end of September. So the returns for the year through third quarter on the long-term portfolio was a negative 3.8%. Lagging our benchmark, so if we just invested according to our benchmark of 70% intermediate and 30% mortgage-backed securities, we would have done a little better in that third quarter being just with the benchmark. But when you look long-term for the year, we're down almost 10% in value through the third quarter. We would have been down a bit more per the benchmark. So our money managers are doing good things for us as far as gaining us value. We have seen that over the years. One thing to keep in mind, 10%, it's hard for me to stand up here and say that and that we have this decline in value because it's the largest decrease we've seen in the 25 years that I've been with the city. Back in around 2000, 2001, we had a large decrease. Again, I think in around 2008. Of course, we go with when we're seeing recessions and whatnot take place and interest rates going up. So this certainly be the largest one. I want to point out, these are unrealized losses or decreases in values on the portfolio because we haven't sold any securities. So they're... And I looked at Justin. Oh, yes. Pipe in if you want... If I misspeak, because he's an investment professional sitting here. But they're unrealized losses. City governments are required to mark our investments to market on a monthly basis. So Sandy goes through the investment portfolio and adjusts to the market value of what that is. And that dates back to the mid-'90s. That governmental accounting statement came through for that. So all that being said, we have seen many years of great increases in value. This year, we're having some of a giveback. So from inception of the portfolio, though, our return overall has been about 4.3%. Now, I want to see that swing back up because, of course, interest rates are rising. Now, let's say a little good side of that. The investments now that our money managers are purchasing for us are at higher interest rates, will earn higher dollars. We have been at very low rates for quite some time. So you have this inverse effect, but then we should start to see that come around. The good news is, we don't need to sell any of these investments and realize any of those decreases in value. of those decreases in value. So again, talked about, we're thinking that rates will go up again in December. Galliard feels that a lot of this has all been priced in the market already with what we're seeing here. Mike Keshen also with Advanced Capital, he sits on our investment committee. He says, yeah, we could still see some more inflation in that that's not quite priced in. In other words, we don't quite have all the answers to that. So that, yeah, the decrease in value, like I said, there is about three point five million. We know we've seen that again in October a bit and in November, but certainly looking for that to turn around in, in time. It will take some time to come back as well, so. Any questions? Sandy, am I missing anything that I was gonna say? I didn't read word for word. I was kind of more speaking off the top of the head from the memo.
Thanks, Bill. Scott, go ahead.
Since we haven't realized any decreases in value since we haven't sold anything, that's good. How soon before we're gonna need to sell something and get at that money and then be possibly faced with losing something?
Yep. I don't see that on the horizon for us into twenty-three because we have the twelve million dollars sitting in the 4M fund, which is really part of the portfolio that's in that more money market. So the projects that we talk about funding in the coming summer, we will use those liquid funds first. And then also, as, in the long-term portfolio, as maturities naturally mature, they go into the cash portion of the long-term. We can withdraw that out instead of having it reinvested if we need to without saying, go and sell an investment. If we needed to sell something, they could turn that around for us in, you know, three weeks. They like at least three to four weeks heads up from me, but fortunately, we haven't had to go through that very much. So we would call back matured principal on interest before we would sell anything.
Thanks, Bill. Scott, any other questions? Thank you for that update, Bill.
Thank you.
Moving along to the two thousand twenty-three utility rate recommendations. Again, Bill Sawmore.
Get the keyboard set up here a bit so I can flip through just a few slides and land this automatically on. That's. That's. Huh? Everyone have a copy that needs. Guys got some here. We'll start into it. This is a bit lengthy, so I will try to cruise through it. Ask me questions along the way if you want, or, you know, we can round up with them again as we come through to the end. But we do look at utility rates every year in preparation of the budget. We study the rates going out through the year twenty thirty-one is what we're projecting. So we're looking long-term. We look at what's in the capital improvement plan, look at operations and come up with recommendations, how to try to keep things level as we go. So we're talking about our city enterprise funds. These are funds that are run like private businesses. Our tax dollars are not going into these businesses. Oftentimes, money comes out of these into the general fund to cover related costs for operating them, but we don't put tax dollars into these businesses. It's the user charges that fund these businesses. So the city runs a refuse fund. It's our garbage collection, recycling, the landfill, the demolition cell out there, and then the roll-off business. Those are your large twenty and thirty-yard containers. Of course, we have a sewage treatment system, you know, a collection system and a treatment facility, water treatment facility and water distribution, so all the lines in the grounds, and then storm water to collect all that storm water runoff. So that's what we're talking about tonight. We start out with what's the average utility bill? We're looking at, comparing it on a six thousand gallons per month. Now, Fergus Falls, this may be just a little bit higher, maybe we're more around five, but we use six because some of the comparative data we have is in six thousand gallons to show you comparability. So you can see garbage, various parts of that sewer, water, storm, for a total of a hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty cents. That's where we're currently sitting with our current rates. When did we last do rate changes? We changed refuse fund and recycling in January of twenty-two. Tree management, it's been since back in twenty seventeen. Our dumpster roll-offs in twenty twenty. Demolition, we did bring that up last year as well as water. And then sewer and storm water in twenty twenty. So we didn't make any changes last year to those. So here's one of those comparative charts. It's hard to see on the screen, but you can kind of see at least where we land with other cities. And this takes in, this is Minnesota here, excluding Minneapolis, St. Paul, but AE2S Engineering, they do a study that looks at probably a five or six-state region, I think is what we're looking at, all the way out to Colorado to see where we compare. But we're pulling the Minnesota data. So it's even hard for me to read there. You can see we're at eighty-one dollars and fourteen cents. This is for the water, the sewer and the storm. So garbage is not in this slide. This is our current rates, where we're at, how we compare. So the refuse fund, we're gonna talk about these individually and we kind of highlighted on the previous slide. So our garbage fund right now, current trend, operating costs, you know, everything is going up. As we know, in our homes, here at the city, we are seeing higher fuel costs, equipment costs, supplies, everything is going up with inflation. One exception here, the good news for us this year, we're not seeing an increase from Otter Tail County for our disposal charges. So that will remain the same at a hundred and twenty-three dollars, ninety-three cents per ton for twenty twenty-three. We are recommending a three percent increase in the collection part of the business, but no change to the disposal part of the bill for garbage. Recycling here for commercial and residential, again, those same costs continue to go up for us. We're not recommending a change right now for recycling. We'll leave them the same for twenty twenty-three. We did move from six dollars and six to six fifty a month in twenty twenty-two, but we will see increases in the future. Recycling is expensive. It's the right thing to do, but it does cost a lot of money to process that waste. Fergus is doing a really good job with the single sort. People are using it. I know our residents like that. We're seeing good results from that, but it, waste is expensive to contend with.
Bill, can I maybe, I think I've said this before, so this will be my last chance to do it, but I can only speak to our household, but I could utilize recycling picked up every week and garbage every other week. I don't know if that's within our community the same, but, you know, I usually have maybe two bags of garbage in my garbage and it comes weekly. And I know I brought this up in the past and it would benefit if I didn't put it on the curb if I only had one bag in it, allow the driver to go on to the next one. But I don't know if that's a consensus within, within the community, but my recycling is full after one week, so.
So Guy, you wanna make a note about that a bit? We can talk more about that. I mean, that's structural changes for us as a city, so that's why it's not easy to turn that ship, but it's good to keep it on our radar that we don't forget about that.
And it would flip-flop, right? I mean, if you did recycling every week and garbage every other year, those trucks are still at the same time, so I don't know that there's a cost savings necessarily, especially if recycling is more expensive to tip than the disposal of garbage. But just wanted to bring it up. I think we've talked about in the past and I don't know if my experience is.
Duly noted. We just don't have anything in this year's plan for making any changes that route.
Bill, along with that, it's much easier to do that with garbage during the winter when it's sitting out there frozen and doesn't smell. It's a little tougher during the summer when you got the high heat.
Yeah, good point. Duly noted.
As I said, we have lots of things to contend with, with the waste side of things. Recycling, tree management. For the tree management here, the fee covers the waste disposal of trees at the landfill, not for the Dutch Elm program. That's funded through our general, general fund. The funds here that are on your utility bill are purely used out at the landfill contending with the brush and the tree waste out there. Again, we're not recommending any changes for this year, but we may like, likely see one in twenty-four or beyond. We'll come back to that, so. Demolition debris. Our disposal rate, we did go from twenty-five to thirty-one because, as we talked about earlier, you know, Fergus Falls being one of the first cities to have to put in a lined cell for demolition, really brought that cost up. We had to bond for that. We have fixed costs related to that, so we need rates to cover that. It is much higher than we used to be. We did raise that last year. And the good news is, I remember last year, I was starting to waffle a bit and you as a counsel told me, no, cover our costs. We did the right thing because people are still using it the same. So our volumes did stay there at the rates they should be to cover the costs, so no one else is subsidizing it. So thank you, counsel, for pushing me in that direction because it didn't turn out the way it should, that it's covering the costs. So we're not looking at any changes right now for that as well. And of course, we evaluate this every year. Landfill, we do have some operations there. We're looking at, we are seeing increased costs out at Gwinner landfill, waste management landfill. So the disposal rate up from forty-seven eighty-one up to fifty dollars and twenty cents, the surcharge of about five percent. Mattresses are a big issue for us. They pull them out, out at Gwinner, and they charge thirty dollars per mattress out there. So we have to make sure we're covering that cost when we're taking it in here and then trucking it out there. Public Works made a great decision on purchasing this walking floor trailer. So it's like a big semi-trailer, right? And then it will unload by walking the waste out of that trailer, cut our trips down, so we have cut costs in that area on the time and the mileage and the fuel going out there. So that was really a good purchase that, that helped. So we are looking at the bypass, all that waste that goes out to Gwinner, raising that rate from twenty-five to thirty-one, that is then the same rate as the demolition that we bring into our own site here. Tires up from four to six dollars because again of our costs of disposing of that. Scott at the landfill does a great job tracking these costs and bringing those thoughts and those costs to us. And then the loading fee, when we go out and load mulch, we haven't increased that in years, so recommending going from ten to fifteen on that one. Again, higher operational costs, fuel is much higher than it used to be. So looking at that. Okay, now we'll get into these charts and graphs. The refuse fund is the slower one, so bear with me through this one. It's got so many components and then we'll get to water and sewer and storm. But refuse fund, here's our performance where we've been. Look at that two thousand twenty-two column. You can see the change in net position. You can't really read it on there because it so went away. That's the decrease in the investment earnings for the year that are actually a negative. So that, that brought that down and we hope to see that come back in the future. Okay, refuse fund, if we don't do any increases, if we just hold revenue the same, but we see our inflationary increases in expenses, you can see what happens. The performance of that just ticks down and that kind of gold color change in that position becomes negative. Here's what would happen to the cash balance in that fund if we don't do any increases. But that stands to reason, doesn't it? If your costs keep going up, but you never change your revenue source, it, you're, you're gonna live off your savings account then till it's gone. And that's what that would be. We're not recommending this, of course, it's just showing what it would be. We have capital improvements out there. In two thousand twenty-four, we would look to opening a new demolition cell, closing the old one, so those costs are there. We depreciate that over five years so that there's money to do it again in five years. Twenty twenty-six, in the capital plan is a leachate collection system and a force main to get that in, over to the sewer plant. We will evaluate that. I can't say for sure that will be done, but we'll work between Public Works and Engineering and look, is that feasible? It's been in that plan since that facility was built. So we'll look at that, but it's still in, in the CIP. And then I mentioned out in twenty twenty-nine, there is another six hundred thousand for an opening of a cell and closing. So we need to make sure we have cash there to do that when we, you know, run that through So then if we do revenue increases and we're looking at that three percent for the collection fee and those other things we talked about, then look, we're trying to keep that change in net position, you know, pretty, pretty stable there is what we're looking for. And then our cash balance, we actually do go down some. You can see the drops when we do those larger capital projects. So cash actually dropped some. We'll continue to monitor this as we come back and if we get some investment earnings coming back in here to bring that back up. So that's what, we're not pushing it too far. With a decreasing cash, we maybe could be a little more aggressive, but staying with three percent right now. Okay, that was refuse fund. Any other questions on refuse as we move to sewer fund? Okay. Sewer fund, current operations, again, you can see our change in net position has jumped around a little bit, but the last two years certainly down. And again, the, the large bar, sewer fund has the largest cash balance for the city. We were probably up at eleven, twelve million dollars. Well, ten percent of that just went down in losing of that value. So there's about a million dollars we built in that the decrease in value. That's what's showing up there in the performance. If we don't do anything, again, same type of scenario, you can just see that continue to drop down. Here's what the cash balance would do in the sewer fund if you didn't do any increases in revenues, but you had anywhere from three to six percent inflation of expenses. Lots of capital improvements throughout the sewer fund because when we do streets, we're doing the infrastructure underneath, we're always looking at that. Let me flip forward to this one if I have any notes I was gonna point out. Yeah, for instance, I can, the first tall column, then Junius Stanton, we have both those projects we've talked about, Summit Laurel Linden area that I think we're designing in-house. We'll be coming back to you all with these projects. And then the downtown riverfront, I wonder if it wasn't maybe a hundred thousand for the sewer-related charges for phase two? Yeah. Lift station number six comes out there in number twenty-five, but your normal infrastructure capital here. Typically with the sewer fund, we have not been bonding for any of that. We pay cash for that and try to always cover that. Then we're not paying interest, we're not financing. So that's a good scenario we're in with the sewer fund. Here's what the rate structure would be. We are looking, and I see, we changed it to four. The title we have says three, but it is four. Look at the right-hand column as I'm trying to manage those cash balances. So sewer, we're looking at four and four going out as well. We built in as we look out to twenty thirty-one, both the flat and the flow rates. So here's, if we do that four percent, you see still now in twenty twenty-three, a large decrease in the net position in year twenty twenty-three. We talked about the old wastewater treatment plant, the demolition of that just at our last meeting, I believe. And that's eight hundred thousand is what we have built in there. I know that number's been in there for a little while. That's an expense. It's not a capital project that you depreciate, so that's hitting the expense that year. Then we start coming back around, looking at operating income. Here's managing that cash balance, actually coming down from where we're at and even going through twenty thirty-one, not quite back up there. So this is with four percent increases to that annually, just to keep up with the inflationary costs. This is where we fall. So look on page twenty-six, the slide number. You can see where our sewer rates compare to others. I'll get there. I'm being hokey, sorry. Yeah, so we're at thirty-five twenty-three and you can see how we compare with other cities right even around us. So we're a little bit more towards the lower on this, so I can just give you a little bit of comfort level as, as we evaluate that. Okay, water fund, two funds left. So same scenarios here, the, the decrease in performance, again with the investments. We have had higher income in this fund. We've been building in for higher change in that position when it's, because our cash balances aren't as high as the sewer fund. We're probably about half. If we did no decreases, performance again, will start to tail off. The cash balance would, would go down again, same scenario, same types of capital improvements, infrastructure-related items. So here's some of the bigger capital improvements we're looking at. Will we need to replace reservoir number one? That's from two thousand, or nineteen fourteen. We did rehab reservoir number two already, so we'll need to look at, do we need, will we need to replace this? Right now, it is in the CIP. Reconditioning the one water tower for seven hundred and fifty, the other one for one point three million, possibly adding a well to our water treatment system out in twenty twenty-five. So we're looking at a three percent for water rates, flat and flow over that time. Here's what that table would look like for the flat charges. Oops, I went too quickly there. There's the flow charges. Remember by capacity, when you get so high, it goes to the next tier, relates to water conservation rates. So with those three percent, then we're back to having good change in net position and operating income. That's bringing that cash balance back up. Now, you can see we're here starting below six million. Now, you can see, we're here starting below six million, the sewer fund was a bit above nine million, so that's why we're trying to, again, bring that back up. Water infrastructure is even higher value in our accounting system at like fourteen million versus twelve million of net of depreciation for those assets. Here's where we fall in water rates, you will notice, this chart is those reporting softening. So I do want to point out, City of Fergus Falls softens our water, you don't need water softeners in the home, you don't have to be buying softener salt, so that's why we compare to other cities there. This chart will show that for all those Minnesota cities participating, excluding the metro area. So this is softening and those that don't soften the water. Stormwater, same, same verse again, you can see the investment impact there. If you don't do any increases, we'll see the decrease in performance, cash balance would actually had to be one point one negative in the deficit out in two thousand thirty-one if we didn't do anything. Stormwater, we have some big projects coming on the CIP in two thousand twenty-three. Part of that also is across the river here with phase two, it's a large stormwater portion of three hundred and ten thousand is within that number, as well as some of our other major infrastructure. If we then implement increases, Jim?
I have a question that I get asked of me all the time on stormwater. We have no stormwater out in our area. Why are we charged?
So this is managing stormwater throughout the city, whether it's ditches, or if it's actually catch bases and piping. And a lot of it is all these regulations that come with too, from the MPCA, looking at Anthony. And I know Brian was talking to me the other day about how we're going to even, of course, see that more ramped up. So, it's all that, you hear him talk about MS four, I couldn't tell you what, what that stands for for sure, but it's the stormwater management that comes down from the state level to cities that we do need to manage. So even though you don't think you have stormwater infrastructure, you do have ditching systems that we're designed at, and the water does run somewhere that we often deal with. Is that a fair type in with, no pun intended?
Well, into the pond behind our house, which we help pay for on assessments.
Yeah?
Do we fund any of our street sweeping out of the stormwater fund?
Yes, we do. Yeah, probably half of our street sweeping equipment rental, Sandy, does that sound right? About fifty percent we put to stormwater? Because you're sweeping all that up, so it doesn't go down into the stormwater drains or into the ditches or...
Ours just goes into the ditches.
We still do it.
We still sweep.
That's, it's a question I get.
You do.
Quite often.
And we get it at City Hall often too, that's, it's a very common question. So, looking at, doing a dollar increase, this is, it's a flat charge on stormwater going up one dollar in twenty-three and one in twenty-four, and then looking at fifty cent after that. This is what would, the cash balance then would look like with keeping that going. You can see a much smaller cash balance in the stormwater fund, but again, a big part of our infrastructure too. I want to step back on just two things and point out, in the water fund, when we looked at that cash balance, I am looking at bonding for a couple of those projects, the big, if we do the reservoir for one point six million, we'd probably have to issue a bond for that. And reconditioning the one tower for like one point three million could be another bonding, as well as, I know I had another four hundred thousand, so managing that, and then that's amortized over fifteen years, because we're not sitting on the higher cash balance to manage that, projecting some potential bonding in that. So I wanted to point that out a little bit for stormwater too, because we don't have as high cash balances here. This is what those rates would look like per month, going from seven seventy-five to eight seventy-five then for the residential, and we keep that in the same proportions going above for commercial and large commercial. Stormwater, we're probably a little bit more towards the higher end on those rates when we compare to these other cities, but I would say there are some cities that probably don't have a separate utility for it, doing it through the general fund, like the City of Fergus Falls did prior to having this utility, then it's funded through the general fund and through the general property tax, so not always quite as comparative. Okay, we get to the end here, what does this all mean? We put in those various increases of, from the garbage, a little bit of tax on the garbage, doing four percent on the sewer, three percent to the, the water, and then that dollar, which it comes to be higher at twelve point nine on the, on the stormwater portion. All that being said, would go up four dollars or three and a half percent to this average utility bill. And then, like we were talking internally, compare that to a gallon of gas or a gallon of milk when you go to the store. So the schedule, we're here tonight, I'm not asking for you to make a decision tonight, you can chew on this a bit, we can talk about it a little bit more when we come back for the budget hearing in December, that's on December fifth. So we do have these built into the, to the budget. And changes, all of them will go into effect in January except for sewer. We do that one in April because it's based on your January, February, March usage, so when it's winter time, you're not washing cars, you're not watering lawns, so we're not counting that kind of flow. So, that's the last slide, sorry, that was long, but it's in there.
Thank you, Bill. Questions for Bill tonight? We'll be taking this up obviously as part of the budget that we look at in two weeks, so if there's no questions, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Item number three is an update on the annexation with Fergus Falls Township, call on City Administrator Andrew Brumse.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Council members, just as riveting as Bill's presentation is the annexation conversation, but the council...
Thank you, I think.
Yeah. The council previously appointed Councilmember Hicks to join city staff in approaching Fergus Falls Township, related to annexation of land directly south of the ethanol plant, which was a request made by the property owner, PPTF LLC. Recently, we met with the township at their meeting, and we've had subsequent discussions with them and meetings with them, talking about a joint resolution to accomplish this annexation. And these conversations, I think, have been very helpful because it's identified what's important to the township, but also, of course, what the city can tolerate and live with as part of a joint resolution. And one item that's very important to the township that caught us a little bit off guard, which is why we wanted to touch base with the council tonight and look for some direction, is that they would like a commitment from the city that the city would not initiate annexation of the ethanol plant for a period of twenty years. The ethanol plant is their largest taxpayer in Fergus Falls Township, and obviously very important revenue to them, and they don't want the city to force annexation upon the ethanol plant. As we talked through that with the township, we've made it clear that we had to have this discussion with the council, but what they're asking is simply that the city not initiate annexation. If the owner of the ethanol plant or any subsequent property owners of that property ask to be annexed into the city, they would not object to that, it just can't be the city initiating or forcing the annexation on that property. That's the request they're making, again, for a period of twenty years. Currently, the ethanol plant has their own well and septic systems and treatment and all those things, I don't need to get into the details of that. There's no value the city would add by annexing that property, and they don't need to be part of the city to operate the way they are today. So, to get this done and to get this joint resolution to a place that the township would approve it, that is the most important piece to them, is the commitment from the city to not initiate annexation of that property for twenty years, so I want to hear your feedback on that. And then the other things that we've been discussing are monetary items, which would be covered by PPTF LLC and would not cost the city anything financially. So, really that big piece is the conversation around the ethanol plant property, and I'll just say, it was pretty evident that that's an important concept to the township and something they feel is necessary to get something complete. So, I don't know if Councilmember Hicks or any others want to add to those conversations, but that's the guidance we need this evening.
Yeah, I think, as Andrew said, it was, the ethanol plant wasn't really, wanting, wishing to be part of this discussion, it was about annexation up to, but obviously the township, and we've met with them a couple of times, and, you know, this became, you know, one of their, one of their issues, that they, they don't want, they don't want the city to force annexation. I think they see the city as at this border, and that obviously the city could just hop over that line. Obviously today, as Andrew said, we've got significant dollars tied up in infrastructure, but we don't, we don't want to be put in a corner that, you know, down the road, it might be beneficial for the city to join, you know, for the plant to join the city, if we need different water or we need different sewer systems. So, it was kind of, yeah, ended up being a little bit difficult situation really, but, because that wasn't, wasn't, but the, overall, the conversation about annexation, the purpose of why we were meeting them was obviously for the land that's PPTF, and, and also some of the property that Bonkowski owns that's just a little bit north on that land, that's north of Ziegler's. I mean, fairness, I think that, those conversations were actually went very well overall.
So, so Anthony, let me ask you, so if ten years down the road, there is a change in technology or infrastructure needs or whatever it is, that's something typically that would come from the ethanol plant anyway, right?
Yep.
Because we're not going to, we're not going to require you to use...
Yeah, I mean, we would like to remain the option to join, to join the city should that, because as, as technology moves and regulations move, then, there may be a day when it's prudent for us to buy water from the city or dispose of should to the city. So...
Okay.
And obviously, I will abstain from the vote.
Yeah, I don't think we have a...
Yeah, we don't necessarily need to take a vote, I just need to know if the council's comfortable making a commitment of that in magnitude, and then, just real quickly, Your Honor, the, if, if we can agree to terms, the township will take up the joint resolution at their December thirteenth meeting, and then the council would act on December nineteenth to approve the joint resolution.
The only thing I would just ask is that, I assume that the city attorney is weighing in on this as far as, you know, if there's change in ownership, change in use of the plant, land, any of that, he feels we were protected for our needs going forward. Twenty years is a long time.
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember...
I would agree.
City attorney is drafting the agreement, we actually have it pretty much drafted, and has been in consultation with their attorney, and, and both attorneys understand that's the intent, so we'll ensure that the language is adequate to, to meet the intent.
Well, I appreciate the work on this, and Anthony, I'm glad you're, I've got to put you in a little bit of a tricky situation, but I'm glad you're the one, honestly, I'm glad you're the one doing it because you know it better than anyone out there, so thank you for that.
Scott?
It apparently is the township's concern, and they're looking for some protection, and I wonder to what degree there's still some room for negotiation, and to offer them that protection maybe in a different way. As you said, Ben, twenty years is a long time, the chances of any of us still being involved twenty years from now, you know, it's pretty low.
Jim will still be...
Jim's still...
But, for example, in the most recent annexation, if I remember right, the way that the terms of that were done was over a five-year window of time, and went eighty, sixty, forty, twenty percent as things were kind of tapering. Was that a part of any sort of a conversation, or was that any part of an offer? Instead of giving them a twenty-year, you know, it's not going to happen, how about when it happens, if it happens, this will be the process, and then, you know, based on whoever initiates it, this is how it happens, and then there isn't, it doesn't lock us into some twenty-year commitment. It just still gives them some protection so that when it happens, they've, they know they've got a five-year adjustment, and it doesn't just happen overnight. Would something like that be worth throwing into the negotiation, or are we already past
I would, I would say that they're pretty hard and fast on, I mean, we pay them thirty thousand dollars a year, and that's a significant piece of their, their budget. So I think that they, they were fairly hard and fast about that as a number, and I think as long as we have the option that, you know, the owner of the property can opt to join the city, then, you know, that would be the most, that's kind of the simplest way to do it and keep everybody happy, and, and get equally, because what we are trying to get out of this is equally the annexation of basically pretty much most of the land from kind of two-ten to kind of to the, the corner of one sixteen, barring the piece in the middle. So, you know, and we're trying to do this in a mutually acceptable way to get, you know, the two parcels that we need today, and, you know, and that means leaving the other one on the, on the table.
The other thing I would add, the number of years, twenty years, that number started higher when we, when they initially proposed it, so I, I guess it shows kind of where they're at related to the negotiation on that. And then the other comment that I would make is, I just lost my train of thought completely. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Let Jim help you.
I would, I would think if down the line, Green Plains wants to be annexed, in at that point is when we give them the five-year buy-in plan, you know, which we would more than likely do because we have with almost everybody else, so...
Yeah, the other thing I was going to add, Your Honor, I didn't completely lose it, was that the, the township believes it's the city's intent or goal to, to ultimately take the ethanol plant, and one of the assure, we've assured them that this discussion hasn't happened, clearly it hasn't, because I don't know where anybody here stands on that, but, so, you know, they're, they're looking at this commitment from that lens, that they feel it's our goal to get there, and so, which is why they have a preference for this stronger language of a certain number of years. But I think the, what you guys are talking about is acceptable, that, you know, we could agree to, to phasing in the tax revenues to the township, or from the township, I should say, should the property owner request annexation. I'm sure that's a, you know, a gesture of, of good faith, but I'm guessing we're not going to get far from the twenty years to be able to accomplish this through a joint resolution.
Thanks, Andrew, thanks, Anthony. Any other questions? Justin?
I would just say, I think what you guys are working on makes sense and gives the property owner the, the option, which I think, like you had mentioned, mayors typically in this situation would, would make complete sense, so I think I would support moving forward with what's been laid out.
Now, one final comment, Your Honor, to that end, and then I'll stop talking, is the, the negotiation started again where the property owner wouldn't even have the option, so I think we made headway on that to be able to protect the property owner as well. It was no annexation of that parcel for twenty, well, a higher number of years, but twenty years, and we, and I, you know, made the comment, it's not fair to bound, you know, any this property owner, any future property owners in that way, so I guess we've made progress on both fronts.
Thanks. Thanks again, Anthony, Andrew, for work, work on this. With that, thanks for the update. There are, there is no older unfinished business, there is no new business to come before the council that I'm aware of. If anyone has anything else, if not, Lynn, any announcements, Thanksgiving?
Another point, that because of the two days of holidays, that anyone who has garbage or recycling on Thursday and Friday is moved to Wednesday this week.
Okay.
Busy day.
And want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, to everyone and their families, and with that, we're adjourned.